So again, we will get that eighty-five percent times right at thirty miles an hour.
I now call to order the special session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six-thirty P. M. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. I would like to thank you all for being here tonight. And roll call, please.
Mayor LaHoozis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
A reminder, the purpose of these meetings tonight is to get public input regarding the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget. Item number one is a resolution two thousand and eighteen, twenty-one, adopting the millage rate for tax year two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Herrick, if you please review the procedures required by law.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Florida Statute two hundred point zero-six-five sets a procedures for the adoption of the millage rate in budget. The final millage rate must be approved before the final budget. The final millage rate for tax year two thousand and eighteen is five point four-two, the same as last year. The rollback rate, I'm sorry, the final millage rate of five point four-two, it's five point zero-four percent above the rollback rate of five point one-six-zero-one. The rollback rate is a rate that would provide the same dollar amount of revenues as the previous year. The increase over the rollback rate is being used to fund salary and operating increases. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. The City Attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting the final millage rate for tax year two thousand and eighteen. Whereas a public hearing was held on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six-thirty P. M. to adopt a final millage rate, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that, one, the ad valorem millage rate for tax year two thousand and eighteen of the City of Tarpon Springs is hereby established at five point four-two-zero-zero, a five point zero-four percent increase over the rollback rate of five point one-six-zero-one. Two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions hereof as required by law.
Thank you. As Mr. Herrick stated, the millage will remain the same as it has been the last three years, and we still have a balanced budget without using any emergency funds. And we're now going to the public comments.
My name is Chris Lang. I live at five-oh-two Lincoln Avenue, and this is what I would like to talk about. We seem to have a problem in Tarpon Springs.
Excuse me, ma'am, this is not the public comments right now. This is public comments on the budget only.
Okay.
We're gonna go to that later. I'll let you know, please.
Excuse me?
I will, if, I'll let you know when the time comes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good evening. Anita Protus, nine-oh-one Bay Shore Drive. I'm gonna ask a question now. We've got six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the preservation and, for this old city hall to restore it back. Is that right? How much do we have in the budget for to take care of the Safford House and the old city hall and our historic structures around and the library?
Do you have any more questions, because we usually get all the questions.
That's it. I just wondered, because I didn't get to come to your hearings.
Okay.
And I just wanna make sure, because we've got leaky roofs at the library, and we need to change the inside.
Uh-huh. The, this resolution here is for the, for the millage rate?
Well, that's why I'm asking, is the millage rate.
Yeah, that's for the millage rate.
Well, the second one's for the budget.
Second one's for the budget.
Well, that affects millage rate.
Sure, thank you very much.
Well, you're up there, Ron. Go ahead. Go ahead, answer it.
The budget of the six-hundred-and-fifty thousand is in this current year's budget to do the remot, renovations on the old city hall. And as far as historic preservation, those are usually budgeted within each department for those facilities like Safford House Heritage Center.
And the library roof is already being worked on, and it is budgeted.
Library roof is in the penny fund for about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand.
Because I got wet there the other day.
Yes, it's budgeted and is gonna be started very soon.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any public comments on this item in regards to the, to the millage Any other public comments on this item? Here and on, are there any commission comments on this item? The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Thank you. Item number two is the resolution two thousand and eighteen, twenty-two, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. The City Attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas a public hearing was held on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six-thirty P. M. to adopt a final budget, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that, one, the City of Tarpon Springs' annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen is hereby finally adopted, and, two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of, and of the provisions thereof as required by law.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item in regards to the, to the budget? Are there any public comments on these in regards to the budget on fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen? Here and on, are there any commission comments? I will detain the motion.
Uh, excuse me?
Do you have one? Yes.
I just wanna reiterate my, our conversations from the last meeting that we had pertaining to the potential additional funds that may be available if the grant is received for the firefighters, and also if the north, uh, what do you call it? The park north of the river.
Trail, the trail.
The trail isn't extended this fiscal year. One of the discussions that we talked about was looking at South Spring Boulevard, and I know I saw an email that came out that the city staff is looking at extending the sidewalks and fixing the sidewalks, about the eight-hundred feet that's missing. But I do think that we still need to look at a bigger picture overall and how to address the rocks that are out there, and still game plan on what our next steps are. So if we do not, if we receive the grant and we do not move forward with the trail north of the river, I think this is the area that we should focus on and come to a resolution to fixing this area still. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the Budget Advisory Committee, the Vice Chair that is here with us today. Mr. Peters, did you like to share a couple words with us in regards to the budget that you worked all year for it?
Marty Peters, seventeen-oh-two Heritage Oaks Court, Vice Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. Over the year, the Budget Advisory Committee has met a number of times, and we've gone through the budget in some detail and asked a lot of questions and asked for a lot more information, and pretty much done our best to drive the city staff crazy. Sorry about that, Ron. But the city staff has been very good, particularly, Ron, providing the information that was requested. And then that information was provided to you, and hopefully that made it easier for you to make some of the decisions. We, as a committee of citizens, recommend that the budget be supported as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everyone on the Budget Advisory Committee. You guys did an excellent job, we appreciate it. We already went through the public comments. Any addition, commission comments now? And I will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the special session, and it's adjourned at six-thirty-nine P. M. And we now go to Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six-forty P. M. Roll call, please.
Chair LaHoozis?
Here.
Vice Chair Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Item number one is the resolution two thousand and eighteen, zero-four, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Herrick, if you please review the procedures required by law.
Good evening. The final CRA budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen is five-hundred-and-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, an increase of sixty-eight-thousand, eight-thirty-six over the, a fifteen-point-nine percent increase over the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. The majority of the increase is due to the increase in property values at ten-point-two-nine percent. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero-four, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas a public hearing was held on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six-thirty P. M. to adopt a final budget, now therefore it be resolved by the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that Section One, the Community Redevelopment Agency's annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen is hereby finally adopted. Section Two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions hereof as required by law.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? Here and on, are there any commission comments?
Public comments?
It's getting close.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
As, again, I wanna reiterate from our last meeting that we had pertaining to CRA funds that we have, and just wanna ask and continue to ask that we look at an area as a board. The need of parking is still great in the downtown area. If we could identify some areas for a parking garage to have a further discussion, have discussions also to look at grants to encourage development and redevelopment in certain parts of the CRA, and also look at potentially covering impact fees to encourage development also. Again, beautification projects and green space and also lighting in downtown is an area that needs to be addressed, and I know some of these will be addressed in this coming budget, but I know the budget is actually a little bit higher than we anticipated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes. Well, that concludes the CRA agenda, and it's adjourned at six-forty-three P. M. And we now go to the regular session meeting. I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six-forty-three P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Kurt Snare from the Saint Timothy Lutheran Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
The Lord be with you. Heavenly Lord, we give you thanks for the gift of this day. We give you thanks for allowing us to live in this beautiful city that you've given us. We pray that you would guide us to be good stewards, be with our elected officials tonight, give them your wisdom and your counsel, that we might bring you glory. We pray your blessing upon this evening, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have a special proclamation. Vice Mayor Banther will read the proclamation on Junior League Recognition Month.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. A proclamation, whereas this, 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 this proclamation is issued in, in recognition of the Junior League of Clearwater Dunedin, and whereas the Junior League of Clearwater Dunedin was created in nineteen-eighty-six, and whereas the Junior League is, is an organization of women committed to promoting, um, of, of, of volunteerism and improving the community through effective action and leadership of, 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 of trained volunteers. Whereas the Junior League members are doctors, accountants, lawyers, homemakers, mothers, teachers, and other professionals who have united to reach out and make a difference in the lives of others. Whereas its members have engaged in numerous community service projects, both independently and in collaboration with other community organizations. Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes the commitment and leadership, charitable and educational contributions to improving communities, and therefore I, Vice Mayor David Banther, on virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-eighteen as Junior League of Clearwater Dunedin, a rec, a rec, a, the, 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 the recognition month. And I, I, I just wanna point out that this group met, met with me prior to the meeting to go over kind of, you know, their possible roles in volunteering in city government and learn, learning, learning more about it. And this particular club does do a large program at Tarpon Elementary, or I think it's called Paca Sack, and they, they do a lot of feeding for children at Tarpon Elementary that otherwise would not have food in the evenings and on weekends. So if one of them wants to come up and accept this proclamation, I believe, Mary, you wanted a picture as well with the commissioner?
Well, if the ladies, that's what they wish.
That's what you wish?
Is...
You wanna do it?
Uh-huh. You want all of us to come there?
Oh, yes. So, you wanna do your thing? Maybe get a little surprise. Get, get, get out of the way. One floor. One seat. Anyway, we have five to...
Who's white? Uh...
You are.
All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh... You are. All right. It'll be fun. Who's white? Uh...
Thank you very much. Thank you. If you have a comment, please come forward. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Sandy Rizaldi. I live at 540 East Boyer Street, and I'm seeing them all in my neighborhood. I've also approached the managers and stuff, and they said that the city comes out and picks them up. That's what I've been told. Also, my daughter works at Publix, and we've seen...we're starting to see Publix carts. They're breaking off the locks. So, just to let you know, just to piggyback on our friend over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and all of the members of this Board of Commissioners. It has recently been brought to my attention that some or all of the members of the Board of Commissioners may have taken offense or incorrectly misconstrued a statement I made at the September 4th Board of Commissioners meeting. I wish to clarify that it was not my intent to insinuate that anyone from this office, meaning the Board of Commissions, is responsible for any wrongdoings. As the Executive Director of the Shepherd Center, I am passionate about the work that we do to assist those in our community that have come upon hard times and are in need of a helping hand. In the heat of the moment, I may have improperly communicated my position. For this, I am truly sorry. I sincerely apologize if my remarks to the Board of Commissioners were offensive. It was not my intention to create ill will. It is important that the Board of Commissioners support the efforts of the Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center. I believe we all have the same goals, and we can work together to achieve the best possible results for all our parties involved. I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners in building a community that comes together in their care and compassion for the less fortunate in our community. And again, please accept my apology. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the explanation. Any other comments?
Good evening. Peter Lachas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Had a lot of things I wanted to bring up tonight. I have to narrow them down. First off, as I spoke at Public Comments last week about the intersection of Safford and MLK, it was bad then, it's worse now. I go online, I still don't see any kind of updates. I do see something about the Mears Crossing with the timeline and permits and all that stuff, so I'm curious, does any of that work have anything to do with the Mears Crossing? Does any of the utility work that's been going on the last couple of months at the corner of Mears and Alter 19 have to do with the Mears Crossing? I have questions about, since they're beginning to build, if they made a commitment to begin starting on the road, because according to the development agreement, that road needs to be done before they get a certificate of occupancy, and they're looking to try to have this done by spring of 2019, if you look at their website. So, those are my issues there. Secondly, a lot of you probably have Spectrum. Did you get this little letter in the mail? Another example of how our corporate cable companies are disenfranchising our residents. If you remember, a number of years back, when they went to digital, anybody who had an analog TV and wanted to get the signal for any public meetings, had to get a box. They were only gonna charge you a dollar. Come on, it's only a dollar. You can afford it? Well, now they've really jumped the scale. I got one, then my mom got one, and it says you'd be required to have a digital receiver on your home by October 9th. For me, I get it for 12 months free, for my mom, because it says she's in an apartment complex, term of the current agreement. But it's got a lot of little stars, a lot of little stars down here. Standard rates apply after promotional period ends. Standard rates will apply for installation taxes, fees, surcharges, and additional equipment. Now, why do I bring this up? My mom lives at Green Dolphin, 55 over community. Most of them are over 65 and 70. They're older folks. They got older TVs. My mom has older TVs, three of them. At my mom's house, door knocks, it's the lady from next door, about 85, 88 years old, I can't say, and she's in a panic. "Oh, they called me. They're coming over. They gotta fix it, put a box on my TV. They're charging me $49 to put it in." That's the little sprint down there. Forty-nine bucks. Now, I know for my mom, she'll get one, then if we want one for the kitchen or the bedroom, you know, it's another...and they don't disclose how much they're gonna charge for the other boxes. And we have an agreement, I believe, with them, and I just think it's important, since we speak out for seniors, that we speak out for them also. Lastly, many of you here are second...first or second, maybe third generation people of immigrants. I don't know about you, but when my grandfather came over in the early 1900s, part of the way he was able to get in, and many of you all the same way, you had to have a relative here, a cousin, an uncle. My grandfather had a cousin that was a dentist, so he was able to come in. And what is that really called? Really, it's what they call chain migration. Someone from the family and someone else comes in. Tampa Bay Times today, with regards to our congressional race, we have Mr. Bill Arakis and Mr. Hunter. The two diverge in policy. Hunter condemned the Trump administration's family separation policy while Bill Arakis called for an end to chain migration, but supporting allowing immigrants brought to the U.S. as children to get legal status. Do you know anybody who has relatives who want to come over? If they do, they need to come now.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Item number one is the minutes. A is August 21st, 2018, the regular session. B is September 4th, 2018, regular session. C is September 5th, 2018, special session. Number two is a satisfaction and release of liens. Number three is the attorney fees. A, Trask and Dyno, invoice 56-693, and B is Johnson &amp; Johnson, invoice 3305 and 3306. Number four is a special event. A, Tarpon Springs Leadership Conservatory for the Arts Outdoor Music Festival, October 20th. Number five is to approve correction of errors on the original gender item. Fine number 180172, NRS, single source purchase of maintenance and GPS service and GPS routers. Number six is increased file 150018, CRS, water and wastewater supplies. And number seven is a file number 170163, CRS, Technology Solutions with related equipment and accessories through Sourcewell, contract number 100061CDW. Any items that you'd like to pull? Commissioner Carr? You'd like to pull number four?
Just clarification, if we could.
Sure.
Senator Mark, do you know if they've shut down Golf Road before in the past for this event?
Yes, for at least the last three, four.
All right, thanks.
I think, remember, we tried it one time without it, and it was an absolute disaster because of all the schools and the buses come in, so that was the safest way to do it. So, that's why I'd like...
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Any public comments on the items one through seven? Here none, any additional commission comment? I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Enroll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. We are now going to the special consent agenda. Item number eight is a settlement officer for administrative fine. Clavakas, seat of Tarpon Springs Code Enforcement Board, the city attorney will present this item.
Yes, as you all know, on March 8th, 2018, this board denied a property owner's request for reconsideration of a fine amount that was imposed on a property for code enforcement issues. The property owner actually, after the fine was imposed, took this to the appellate section of the Pinellas County Circuit Court alleging that the fine as imposed was improper. The order that was appealed was not the order that they were intending to appeal. Because of that, the city attorney went and asked the court to strike that appeal. The court agreed. The appeal was stricken. However, in speaking with the representative for the property owner, and as is contained in the memo, we are recommending that the city settle. The property owner has, through council, offered to settle the suit for a recommended $5,000 of the administrative fines. Due to some procedural issues, we do recommend that the city settle, and I can answer any questions that you might have about this.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments or questions?
So, this individual appealed, correct?
Yes.
And then, what was the original amount of the fine again, I'm sorry?
The principal of the lien was $25,100. There was $907 in interest and $203 in costs. The appeal that they actually took was of the final order, which was the order on the reconsideration, and that is what the court struck down, because they did not timely take an appeal of the initial order. So, the city could continue to litigate this through the appeals process. It is likely that we would succeed on appeal. However, if we were going to foreclose the lien, we would run into some issues procedurally and would not be able to foreclose on the lien or collect. So, at this time, we are looking to recommend settlement of the $5,000.
Well, I'll take your recommendation. I just, on the face value, if somebody appeals, and it's now obviously cost us, you know, money to have, you know, attorneys do what they have to do, and now they're coming back because they lost on their appeal, or a portion of it, rather, and then we're gonna settle. But if that's what you recommend, we do in the best interest of them, I would motion for it.
Are there any commission comments?
I'm just curious how the $5,000 was reached.
It was an offer from the property owner's council. It was an amount that they came to.
Thank you.
Any other comment? We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? We obtain a motion?
We have a motion on the floor.
We already have a motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes, thank you. Next is the ordinance resolution. Item number nine is the ordinance 2018-18, the application AT69, rezoning, LUA, Protus. This is the second reading. This is quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read and explain the quasi-traditional process.
And the quasi-traditional procedures will apply to both items number nine and 10 on the agenda tonight, as both are quasi-traditional proceedings. These are quasi-traditional proceedings where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the Board of Commission who wish to disclose any expertake communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to present evidence or speak on these two applications, both agenda items nine and 10, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn. For the first application, if staff could have their presentation, please.
There's no additional information since first read on this application, so with that, staff continues to recommend approval, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
No, I was actually gonna ask, does the applicant have anything additionally that they'd like to add since the last reading?
Good evening. I'm Cindy Terrapan. I represent the applicant, Mrs. Protus. I just would reserve, if there's any comments that I need to respond to, otherwise I don't have anything new to add. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this issue?
Harry Androplas, 905 and 909 Bay Shore. I'm just reiterating my same comment I had priorly. I am in support of the granting of the zoning. I just want to reiterate my concern about the drainage of these lots, and they're draining onto my property, and the planning director has addressed it with me, and she said that she will try and take care of this. I just wanted in the record that I have concerns with the drainage in that culvert, and that's all.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments, questions? Here none, I will obtain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Enroll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Next is item number 10, ordinance 2018-23. The application AT66 is to vacate right-of-way Lucille Drive, Capanitas. This is also quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read the title and will explain the traditional process.
This is for application...ordinance number 2018-23, application AT66 for the vacation of a right-of-way on Lucille Drive. Go ahead with the staff presentation.
Okay. This application is for a vacation of 4,478.52...53 square feet of a portion of Lucille Drive lying north of Lot 20, Block 4 of the Bay Shore Heights subdivision. The application is for that portion of Bay Shore Heights that was not part of the replat that was done to the south, so the property is, in fact, Zone R100, and it lies just outside that area that was replatted in 2016. There are no utilities within the vacation area, and the applicant has provided the required letters of no objection from the various utility providers. The request does not meet the criteria, however, of the Land Development Code, specifically Section 2.1.6.01A4. The property does not provide the joining neighborhood with usable access or vista of the city shorelines. Lucille Drive does, in fact, provide usable access to the neighborhood, and the roadway terminates at Kramer Bayou, providing access to the city shorelines and vistas. This application was noticed to the property owners, and the legal notice was sent to the paper on September...ran in the paper on September 7, 2018. It should be 18. Tampa Bay Times, North Pinellas Times Edition. Technical review team saw this application on June 28, 2018. The only objection at that time was the Planning and Zoning Department. We objected because it doesn't meet the criteria within the code for vacation of right-of-way. As such, staff is recommending denial of this application at this time, based on the fact that it does not meet the criteria of Section 2.1.6.01 of the Land Development Code. And with that, I can answer any questions that you may have on this application.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. You have mentioned that that has not met the criteria, but also there's no utilities into the vacation area. Do you know if, is any plan in the future that any of the utilities companies were actually gonna need this area to run cables or any utilities?
At this time, there is no information to that indication that they would need this particular location for that. Again, both lots adjacent to this, on either side of the actual vacation area, are vacant. One was actually part of the last rezone that we just did, so it's a vacant piece of property, and Lot 20 that this is just north of is also vacant at this time. So, at this time, there's no requirement, or wouldn't be a requirement, for any utilities to go along that portion of Lucille Drive.
I have a question to our city attorney. Do we ever allow the applicant to have a portion of the right-of-way with the condition used, that if we ever need it, we'll return it back to the city?
I mean, you, as the board, you do have the ability to put conditions on an application. However, since this is quasi-traditional, you have to find a positive finding on every single one of the criteria in order to grant the application. If this board does find that there's a positive finding based on the events presented today, you could conditionally approve it, but you would have to make a positive finding on all the criteria that's already...that's in the code.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here and would like to make a presentation? Is the applicant present this evening? Not seeing the applicant. Is there any public comment on this issue?
Good evening again. Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I'm a winner either way it goes. I either get part of the vacating, which will enlarge the lot that we just changed the zoning on, and I had started this way before he ever came to the city for a vacating of the right-of-way. When the development started going in, they wanted to put the road in for the new Bay Shore Heights. The only problem was, the city had the right-of-way all the way around where it comes out now. Like I said, either way you go on it, it doesn't matter to me, because I win either way. But, the city has to be very cautious. When we're not here 10, 12, 15 years down the road, and as tarpon grows, and the area grows out there, you may have to open that road, because when you ride around Tarpon Springs, there are roads that are barricaded, some so the high school kids won't go through one development, and eventually that little portion's gonna have to be opened up. As you go out to Fred Howard Park Beach, there are areas where roads are cut off to the entrance to the park. One day, as tarpon changes, that's gonna have to go through. And all through the Tarpon Springs, we have roads that have been closed off, but the time is coming as traffic gets heavier and as tarpon grows. So, like I said, I would just caution, because if he builds on that property, you can't make him cut off part of his house, and you can't push it around. And that's the only thing I ask y'all to look at, is the future of opening roads and tarpon that are already platted. These are paper-plated roads, and this was all part of the Ferguson Estate years ago. So, that's what you have to look at. What's gonna happen down the future when we need that road, or if we need it, and we don't know. And we may all be out at Cicadia by then. We don't know.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? No, I will obtain a motion.
Motion approved. Also deny, sorry.
You change your motion? Yeah.
I'm sorry. Motion to deny.
Okay.
We're going with the city's recommendation.
Yes, it says recommendation. Yes, I'm sorry, I spoke too quickly.
Yes, second.
We have a motion and a second. Enroll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
A second. I'm sorry. A yes is going along with the motion, correct?
Yes, it's to deny.
Yes, it's to deny.
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regular session agenda, and then we go to staff comments. Police chief?
No comments, mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing here.
Nigel, thank you for being here tonight.
It was my pleasure.
Thank you. City manager?
Yes. I want to try to do a work session, and I'd like to maybe get two in by the end of the year, but I don't know with the holiday schedule, but we definitely need to try to do one, since we've got, you know, five weeks in October. I'd like to try to do it. There's open dates, the 22nd to the 25th, which is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. That week is pretty much open. You really don't have to give me tonight, but what I want to do, first of all, with the new budget, I want to talk about the priorities. We talked about a lot of things, the beautification of projects. We've probably got two and a half years of work to do, and I want to get everybody's priorities, which ones you want us to start off first, and start using the budget and money for all the things we're doing. We also want to talk about the issue Commissioner Carr talked about in the CRA. I think we'll be ready to talk to you in work session about some ideas of the incentives that he talked about in our CRA area, and possibly a couple other items that we have. So, if you would get with me the bad days, I'd like to do that work session, again, either 22nd, 23rd, 24th, or 25th of October, and I think we'll have a full agenda to try to get those things set so we can begin... get those things set so we can begin on the projects and where you'd like us to begin and where you'd like us to start on in many different areas that we've talked about in previous mission meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Licurres on the work session, if you please include the action plan for the stormwater issues that we have. Mr. Robinson always creates the, you know, the action plan, if you bring that with you.
That's usually a regular budget item. That's usually at a regular commission meeting.
To discuss the action plan, not to approve it.
We have a, you're going to increase that agenda because we've got a lot of issues discussed otherwise, and we usually bring the stormwater to a regular session. We usually do that discussion in a regular session, but let's see what else is on the agenda.
It's pretty, it's very important, knowing that we have the seat level, right? So I like to have that.
Well, we may put it on in one of the, the second October. I mean, let me get with that and do it because that's more of a discussion, and we should have a regular session, and I think we're going to have it in a work session, but we'll look to do that to get it on one of the meetings in October.
Thank you. City clerk?
Again, if you just let me know if there's bad days or which were the bad days within the next week or so, so we can, we've got plenty of time to set it up.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the board comments, I'd like to recognize and to thank Mr. Charlie Criticus that is here with us today. He's visiting from Calumnos. Mr. Criticus was our escort when the VOC, our city commissioner, was visiting, now assists the cities, and I want to thank him again in public. Vice mayor?
Yes, I think it's Monday. I always get my calendars confused, though. Judge Kim Campbell, I met her in Leadership Pinellas, her sons in a Cub Scout pack in Palm Harbor, doing like a civic government type thing, and they're, she's having myself and Commissioner Lot Vala Chris to come in and talk about, you know, I guess I'll do the city government portion, obviously he'll do the state government portion. Mine's the better portion, of course. So I'm happy, I'm happy to do that. As I mentioned before, that's why I got started. My interest in this was when I was in Cub Scouts. Want to again thank the ladies of Junior League for coming tonight. You picked the best meeting. This is our shortest meeting in probably six months, and some of our less theatrics too. So I hope you learned a lot and you decide to be engaged in the future wherever you live. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to remind everybody, this Friday is the Homecoming Parade downtown, so I think it starts at 5:00. So try and come out. Line up as of 4:30. The parade starts at 5:00, so try and come downtown if you can and support our high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seber?
Yes, Vice Mayor, is that Howard's, are you talking about with the Boy Scouts? Howard's Initiative with the Boy Scouts and Clearwater Dine?
I think they meet at the Methodist Church in Palm Harbor. I'm not sure.
All right.
She has reached out to a bunch of us, and I just responded yes, and then Chris did so. But I'll find out the details.
Yeah, I got something from him because he's, I'm his mentor in Leadership Pinellas this year, so I thought it might be the same project. Anyway, I was curious. So yes, everybody come out to Homecoming Friday night. We love to see people out there supporting our Spongers. Also, we have a wine walk Saturday night, so that's always an exciting event and a very popular event, so I look forward to seeing a lot of people out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make the rest of the board aware. I think the city manager touched on a few of these already, and I may have touched on them on other subjects so far tonight. But a few things that I asked the city manager to bring forward and discussion items or in a workshop are going to be the following. One's for the CRA area, looking at developer grants and also looking at covering impact fees for new developments. What steps can be made to encourage property owners to rent their buildings along the main roads of Tarpin Springs? We've got a lot of vacant buildings along Tarpin Avenue, along Pinellas Avenue, towards Sponge Docks, going north and south of Tarpin Avenue. And then also, what are the plans to promote the properties that are in need of redevelopment around the city? Number two is city-owned buildings and what the maintenance programs are. As ironic, there's a public comment tonight that was asking about what's the status of the maintenance on some of the city-owned buildings. I think it's a good idea to have full transparency amongst the board and some type of reporting mechanism, if it's an annual report or some sort, to show what the statuses are, maybe age of ACs, maybe roofs, what's coming up, because I have had public interest ask me questions about this in the past. The third item is talking about historical signs. When I travel to other areas of the country, a lot of times in the south, you'll see the signs that are in historic areas of towns that may say something along the lines, at this site, this happened on this date. Tarpin Springs is a really unique historic area, and I think we're really missing an opportunity to continue to educate all of our visitors that are here and a lot of the people that move into town that might not know the history. Some of the areas that I think about are the cultural center, Silver King Brewery, where the old jail fire station is, Sunset Beach, what Sunset Beach used to be, something about the Anclot Lighthouse, train station, the Waterworks Building, the original Pappas's Restaurant, history of the shrimp fishing and sponge industry, the Tarpin Inn, and I know during discussions, we could go on further, so this is going to be, I believe, a discussion topic at some point. Karen did have a very, a unique idea also about incorporating maybe some old pictures of where, what it was before in the past and what it is today, and I thought that was a pretty unique idea as well. And number four, I would like to add on to this one, based on the public comment tonight, I thought that was a very good point that someone brought up about the shopping carts that are around town. Ironically, I did see someone picking up in a box truck, shopping carts along Pine, I believe, towards Lowe's this past weekend, but it is a nuisance around town, and I agree with that public comment. So I'm not sure if there's a code opportunity or something that we could put in place for these other supermarkets or stores that have shopping carts for their patrons, if we can require some type of locking mechanism. I do think that's a great idea because there is a lot of shopping carts left in a lot of the areas around town. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to express my condolences to the family of William Dove and city employee who just passed away. Our prayers and thoughts to are with his family and friends, and I think at some time this week, we're going to have a celebration of his life.
10:30 Thursday at Sunset Beach.
Okay. Also like to announce to everyone that Saturday, September 22nd, we have the Little League Opening Day, and that starts at 9:00 a.m. on Mears Boulevard. I'd like to report to the VOC that I had my monthly meeting with Commissioner Eggers. We have an excellent relationship with him. We meet every month, and we discuss different issues and different projects that the county has been planning here in Tarpaulin Springs. One is the Cywalk installation on Alternate 19 and Anclaw Road. He's going to provide us an update soon, and the Anclaw Road paving that we've been trying to get for a long time, it finally has been scheduled to be done. And we also discussed the shoreline issue on the Wickham Boulevard, so he's going to be giving us more information that this is something that we've been trying to get for a long time. But also he advised me that on February 2019, the Pinellas County Commissioners will create a priority list of projects relating to painful Pinellas, and he's going to provide a list to us for our review and recommendations. This is projects relating to the painful Pinellas in Tarpaulin Springs. So I welcome that, and I want, again, I want to thank Commissioner Eggers for being an excellent partner to Tarpaulin Springs. That concludes our regular session meeting tonight, and it's adjourned at 7:27 p.m., and I want to thank you all for being here and good night.